This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Alrighty, good evening, everyone. My name is Stacy Yarborough and pursuant to the North Haven Town Charter, Chapter 9, Section 903, the town of North Haven Special Town Meeting will now come to order. Again, good evening. My name is Stacy and I am your town clerk. At this time, I will convene our special town meeting. The time is 6:03. Before we begin, and we have quite a few items on the agenda, so before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone, a friendly reminder, that any inappropriate comments or outbursts will not be tolerated. So please, everyone, be kind. Everyone will have the opportunity to speak. Just remember that you can't scream out from the seating area. You have to take your turn and you will eventually come up to the podium, state your name and your address before you have your time to speak. We do appreciate if you're civil and kind in all of our meetings. So before we proceed, we must elect the meeting moderator. The moderator is nominated and elected by the members of the town meeting. Is the moderator's function to bring before the meeting all items of the warning and to assist in obtaining the objective of the meeting while ensuring the rights and responsibilities and all the individuals who are voters for the town. The moderator's duties also include helping any member of the town meeting who seeks clarification and/or to advise them with regard to parliamentary procedure. Further, when it's time to vote on any issue tonight, including voting for the meeting moderator, please be aware to be able to vote, you must be an elector of our town. To be considered an elector of the town, one must have been a registered voter in the town at the time of the most recent election, or one who pays taxes to the town on an assessment of property of not less than $1,000 on the most recent grand list assessment date, as well as a citizen of the United States at 18 years of age or older. This regulation will be in force for all votes taken this evening. If you are unsure of your voting eligibility, you can check with me. I have my book and I'll find you if you need me to. And I can confirm for anyone. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor for nominations for the meeting moderator. Is there a nomination for moderator?
I nominate Lynn Frederickson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll now put this to a vote. All in favor of Lynn Frederickson as the special town meeting moderator, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And now declare Lynn Frederickson our moderator.
Thank you, everybody. I am Lynn Frederickson and I'll be tonight's moderator. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. The town clerk will now read the warning of tonight's special town meeting.
Thank you very much. Please be advised, the following notice legally referred to as the "Warning of Meeting" was published pursuant to Connecticut State Statute. A special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in a town meeting of the town of North Haven, Connecticut, will be held on Monday, September 29, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the upstairs conference room of the North Haven Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, to conduct the following business. A, to consider and vote upon whether to adopt Chapter 190, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, to the ordinances of the town of North Haven, and Article 1 thereof entitled Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices, to authorize the use of automated traffic enforcement safety devices at locations within school zones, pedestrian safety zones, and other places within the boundaries of the town of North Haven. Now, a letter B, to consider and vote upon whether to adopt Article 3 of Chapter 190, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, to the ordinances of the town of North Haven, entitled School Bus Violation Enforcement, to authorize the use of School Bus Violation Enforcement System to improve public safety and reduce the incidence of vehicles illegally passing stopped school buses. And C, to consider and act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the naming of the following roads previously adopted by the town meeting as town roads. One, naming of Amazon Front Access Drive as Amazon Drive. Two, naming of Amazon Rear Access Road to Defco Park Road Extension. And three, naming of School Road Driveway to Bob de Mayo Way. This was dated in North Haven, Connecticut, on the 4th day of September, 2025.
The town clerk will now read the first item of the special town meeting agenda.
A, to consider and vote upon whether to adopt Chapter 190, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, to the ordinances of the town of North Haven, and Article 1 thereof entitled Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices, to authorize the use of automated traffic enforcement safety devices at locations within school zones, pedestrian safety zones, and other places within the boundaries of the town of North Haven. Resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, the Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices Ordinance is hereby approved and adopted in Article 1 of Chapter 190 of the ordinances of the town of North Haven, to authorize the use of automated traffic enforcement safety devices at locations within the school zones, pedestrian safety zones, and other places within the boundaries of the town of North Haven. A summary of the ordinance shall be published in a newspaper having a circulation in the town of North Haven and shall be effective 15 days after publication. Is there a second for the resolution?
Now we come to the point of the meeting when we open the floor for discussion for this agenda item. And the rules for discussion are, as Ms. Yarborough stated earlier, any ensuing discussion, anyone who wishes to speak will get a chance to comment before any... Okay, everyone will get a chance to comment before anyone can be called a second time. You must come forward to the microphone there and speak into the microphone and state your name and address before you begin to speak. And discussion will be limited to this item only at this time. We ask that you limit your questions and discussion to no longer than five minutes. And remember that after everyone has had a chance to speak, you may have another turn. And I think we'll kick this off with Mr. Frida.
Well, thank you very much and thank you for your attendance this evening. So I'd like to summarize the first ordinance and resolution by sharing with you this story. Over the course of the past several years, we've seen a tremendous increase in speeding across the town of North Haven. We've seen more and more accidents occurring. We've seen more reckless driving for whatever the reasons. And my office and the police department and people all over town are asking for help because it is a very serious public safety issue. The fundamental responsibility of local government is to ensure the safety of our citizens. So after careful scrutinization over the past several, several months, we're moving forward with this camera speed violation concept. As all this is happening, there are a number of municipalities that are going to be doing this, some of whom are doing this actually tonight. We think that the number now has risen to almost 15, maybe more, cities and towns that are moving forward with this. So let me explain that what might be in some people's minds here is why would we be doing this and all that is being happening is that it's generating money for the city and town? That's not the case. Because any speed cameras that go in the parts of town that the police department, our office, and the Department of Transportation are going to be authorizing are all going to be clearly marked that there's speed cameras there on two different locations. So that is being done not necessarily to raise more money, although there will be fines for those that don't heed that. That's being done to basically slow the traffic down in those areas. So in other words, if there's signalization that have signs saying there's speed cameras, the residents who are driving in those areas and those who may be speeding are going to know that rather than be surprised by it. So that is something I wanted to share with you. This is something that's very, very important to us. All over the state, I've done press conferences with mayors and first selectmen all over. And everybody's on the same page on this. We have to slow the traffic down. So tonight, that's the summarization. We're going to be hearing from our town attorney, who is going to... Jennifer Capola, who is going to clearly identify the components of the actual ordinance that you're going to be voting on tonight. So before I come back during the next ordinance, we also have our North Haven Police Department here. And these two gentlemen, this is deputy chief, or this is the actual chief now, who was formerly deputy, just been elevated to chief, Andrew Stavridis, and our sergeant in front of traffic control, that handles traffic control, Antonio De Pascal, who's on the front lines with our office in terms of the calls we get begging us to please try to get traffic to slow down. So I hope you look at this with an open mind. It's something that we really want to accomplish. And thank you for your time and I'll be back up for the next ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. And I believe our town attorney would like to speak. Mrs. Capola?
Hi, good evening. I'm going to try to speak as loud as I can. Interrupt me if I'm not loud enough. One of the things I just want to talk to you about tonight, and again, my name's Jennifer Capola, I'm from Seoul in Denofrio. I've written a number of ordinances for the town of North Haven. So what do I do when I look to draft an ordinance? Obviously, when we're drafting any law, we want people to understand what the law's looking to do, right? So we first have to identify where our statutory authority lies. So oftentimes, you'll read an ordinance and you'll see right at the beginning, it'll set forth the statute that we're relying upon and the purpose of the ordinance, okay? Then there'll be a definition section, there'll be a violation section. So we'll identify what act we're looking to prohibit or enforce against. Penalties, and then any procedural issues. Oftentimes, we have a component of being able to appeal at the local level pursuant to the citation hearing officer procedure that's in Connecticut General Statutes at 7-152(c). And then that's used for assessment purposes. And then there's typically a further right to appeal. So you'll see all those components in this ordinance and the other one that's on the agenda for tonight. I just want to give you just some general comments about automated traffic enforcement safety devices and what the law provides in Connecticut. And if people are interested in learning more, I did pass around some of the approved plans. There are five or six municipalities who've had their municipal plan to utilize these devices approved by the Department of Transportation at this point. I believe that there are another half a dozen that have made submittals so far. And I am aware of other towns, other towns that our firm represents, as well as others, that are in the process of preparing to draft their ordinance and then their municipal plan. So this is the first step. The ordinance is what's going to allow the town to go to the next step of developing a municipal plan for using these devices. So, but if you are, again, interested, there are plans circulating that I did print out, so you can take a look. Please take a look and pass them on so everybody gets an opportunity to look at them. Also, the state has a very good website about this particular program that you can actually go and you can review other plans that are being proposed for other towns to get a sense of what other towns are doing. But I'm going to talk a little bit... There's also a section, which is great, and some of my general comments at the beginning are coming from this before I go into the ordinance. But there's a frequently asked questions about the program. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the information that's in that frequently asked questions. So what is an automated traffic enforcement safety device? They use the acronym. I'm going to shorten it. I'm just going to call it a safety device so we can get through this quickly because obviously, we want everybody who wants to comment to be able to make their comments as soon as possible. But it's a device that's designed to detect and collect evidence of alleged violations by recording images that capture license plate, date, time, and location, okay? So that's what the images are capturing. They're capturing a license plate, a date, a time, and location. And the DOT and the Office of the State Traffic Administration, OSTA, many of you have probably heard of OSTA, considers four types of locations in its review of these safety devices. First, traffic control signals for running a red light indication. School zones for exceeding the posted speed limit by more than 10 miles per hour, and that's pursuant to a particular statute, it's 14-212(b). And then pedestrian safety zones for exceeding the posted speed limit by more than 10 miles per hour, which is 14-307(a). That provides what constitutes a pedestrian safety zone. And then other locations for exceeding this posted speed limit by more than 10 miles per hour. So if you look at the beginning of the ordinance, what you're actually authorizing through this ordinance is to be able to enforce with regard to all of those items. I just want to point that out because you're going to see that in the beginning of the ordinance and the declaration of purpose. So a municipal plan. So again, as I said, passing this ordinance is the first step. The next step is to develop a municipal plan. And that plan, and again, there's some circulating, they have a lot of detail in them. Because obviously, everybody else on, what are the locations, right? So a plan has to be created, drafted principally by the police department and, well, the local traffic authority, which is your police commission. And then they are working with its ultimate... Okay, just want to make sure I'm pronouncing that correctly. So that's the town's consultant in the development of the municipal plan. And what's important for you to know, I think, as a resident, is that they're not just using whatever discretion to decide what these locations are going to be. You'll see in each of the plans that I've sent around that the locations are based on data. They're based on traffic stops, they're based on incidents, they're based on traffic counts. So it's objective information. It's not just a random selection. And again, this municipal plan, it gets prepared as it's going to be presented to the DOT. It has a public hearing, so the town has to by law conduct a public hearing regarding its plan for the use of these devices prior to submitting it to the DOT or to OSTA for approval. And the DOT will review the plan and any... So the initial plan and then any subsequent plan. So if there's locations that are added, they're going to review the subsequent plan to add those locations. So I think that that's very important for residents and others that are traveling in the town of North Haven to know about the utilization of these devices. So the DOT, what are they looking at? They're determining if the plan is likely to improve traffic safety at the locations of the devices and determine if the device distribution throughout the municipality is equitable. They have 60 days to either approve or reject the plan in whole or in part. And I want to make very clear, without their approval, there are no devices being installed. The town must have approval, okay? So how does it work? There's going to be signs that are going to warn of the device being used. So in any location where the device is being used, there's supposed to be at least two conspicuous signs. So signs that are visible, signs that are clear in terms of conveying to, you know, operators of motor vehicles on the roadway that the devices are in use. Municipalities also have to provide notification of the use of devices to persons, firms, and corporations that operate mobile applications that are used for navigational purposes or provide real-time information on motor vehicle traffic. So I don't know, maybe you guys want to talk a little bit more about that piece of it. But again, what's happening is license plates being recorded, there's a date and time, and there's a location. And then a member of the police department or the local traffic authority will review the images before the citation is mailed. And it's mailed to the owner of the motor vehicle. And I think the reason for that is obvious. You know, we assume, you know, the owner of the motor vehicle is driving, there's no other way, right, to identify the driver and the owner's the one who ultimately is being held responsible. But there are defenses, and I'm going to get to that when I present the ordinance. Now, what is the penalty? Fines are violations of the municipality's ordinance. For the first 30 days of the automated traffic enforcement safety devices operational, so for the first 30 days, that it's operational at any location, okay? A written warning is going to be issued. So you don't get... Start to get fined if you violate the ordinance until after that 30-day period. The fine cannot exceed $50 for the first offense or 75 for the second and subsequent offenses. I'm going to talk a little bit about that piece of the ordinance in more detail because there's a little bit more to that. And another very important point, I think, for the public is that there's no reporting against your driving record on this. I know that that's a concern, that's been expressed to me in other places. So there's no points against your license for a violation of this ordinance. There's no reporting to your insurance company, okay? So let's talk about the ordinance itself. I'm not going to... It's a long ordinance. I know sometimes people cringe when Attorney Capola presents verbatim an ordinance. I'm not going to put you through that tonight. I will just highlight, again, some of what I think are the most critical parts of it. So again, at the start of the chapter, and this is a new chapter that I created for this ordinance and next, and the Board of Selectmen actually is going to be considering a street takeover ordinance as well soon. So you have a new chapter at 190 of your Code of Ordinances that's been entitled Traffic and Motor Vehicles. So this is going to be Article 1. And again, it's named Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices. The 190-1, the first section, contains the authority and declaration of purpose. I'm not going to go through that. Then there is a definition section. And you'll see, I think, one of the important things in terms of some of the language that I've used already to look at is the owner, definition of owner, pedestrian safety zone, school zone. And as we move on, Section 190-4 provides for the operation and use of automated traffic enforcement safety devices that all automated traffic enforcement safety devices shall be operated by an automatic traffic enforcement safety device operator and shall be used solely for identifying violations of this ordinance. So the town is going to be working, again, with a vendor, with a consultant on this. And the preceding section, 190-3, that second sentence there indicates that if a vendor designs, installs, operates, maintains, and... AT... Yes, D, I'm just saying, safety device, guys. The vendor's fees may not be contingent on the number of citations issued or fines paid pursuant to this ordinance. 190-5 is the important violation section. A provides, the owner of a motor vehicle commits a violation of this ordinance if the person operating such motor vehicle, (1) exceeds the posted speed limit by 10 or more miles per hour and such operation is detected by the safety device, or (2) fails to stop such motor vehicle when facing a steady red signal on a traffic control signal and such failure is detected by a safety device. Again, I mentioned this. B in that section, 190-5, the violation section, indicates that for the first 30 days after a location is equipped with a safety device, the owner of a motor vehicle that allegedly violates the ordinance that is detected by such device shall receive a written warning instead of a citation. So the penalty for violation provision is in 190-6. And it talks about what happens when images record somebody actually violating the ordinance. The review that I spoke of, the mailing of the citation. Subsection B there indicates what the content of the citation is, and it is very specific. Much of this is statutorily based. When we have a statute that's giving us authority, we need to be very careful to follow the requirements of that statute because it jeopardizes our enforcement, okay? So a lot of this language does appear in the statute. And then we add, obviously, provisions for clarification, administration, and so on. So I just want to note, too, subsection C indicates that in the case of an alleged violation involving a motor vehicle registered in Connecticut, the citation shall be sent by first-class mail. This is the timeframe, not later than 30 days after the identity of the owner is determined and shall be mailed to the address of the owner that is in the records of the DMV, okay? So that's important. In the case of an alleged violation involving a motor vehicle registered in another jurisdiction, the citation shall be sent by first-class mail not later than 30 days after the identity of the owner is determined and shall be mailed to the address of the owner that is in the records of the official in the other jurisdiction issuing such registration. Another very important point, subsection D of this section. A citation shall be invalid unless mailed to an owner not later than 60 days after the alleged violation. And then we have E, a member or employee of the police department or other employee designated by the traffic authority shall request that a citation hearing officer appointed by the town pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section 7-152(c), enter an assessment of monetary penalties as set forth in Section 190-7 against the owner if such owner does not exercise his, her, or their right to a hearing on the issuance of the citation to contest the alleged violation, which is something that's afforded by a later section of the ordinance. So what's the fine? This is in 190-7. The town shall impose a fine against the owner of a motor vehicle that commits a violation of this ordinance, A. B, the fine for a first violation of the ordinance, as I stated earlier, shall be $50. This is in the statute. The fine for a second or subsequent violation of this ordinance that occurs within one year of the date of the owner's most recent violation shall be $75. Any subsequent violation occurring more than one year after the owner's most recent violation shall be considered a first violation. And these fines shall be imposed against the owner of the vehicle, again, committing a violation of this ordinance. Payment of a fine or any associated fees may be by electronic means. In terms of fees, because this program to run it is going to cost something, so there has to be a fee. A reasonable fee, not to exceed $15, again, this is by statute, may be imposed for the costs associated with the electronic processing of the payment of the fine. E, any funds received by the town of North Haven from fines imposed pursuant to this ordinance shall be used for the purposes of improving transportation mobility, investing in transportation infrastructure improvements, or paying the costs associated with the use of the safety devices within the town. So there is a specific provision about where the funds are going to. And I think that that is important. 190-8 is the right to a hearing on the citation and matters that are related to the conduct of that hearing. That's a quasi-judicial hearing. And there's some aspects of it that are dictated by statute. You'll see, A says, for example, that a signed certificate is supposed... For the device operator, attesting to the operator's completion of training has to be admitted as evidence at the hearing. There's also a signed certificate regarding the calibration of the device. There's also a signed certificate regarding the calibration of the device that has to be admitted as evidence at the hearing. So all those sort of things that you would expect that are necessary to make sure that we're giving people due process, of course, right? Defenses, I know everybody's interested in this, so let's talk about 190-9. Defense is available to the owner of a motor vehicle that is alleged to have committed a violation of the ordinance shall include, but are not limited to, any one or more of the following. A, the operator was driving an emergency vehicle in accordance with applicable provisions of Connecticut General Statutes 14-283(b)(1). The traffic control signal, so if it's a red light violation, was an operative, which is observable on the recorded images. C, the violation was necessary for the operator to comply with an order or direction from a law enforcement officer, which is observable on the recorded images. D, the violation was necessary to allow the passage of an authorized emergency vehicle, which is observable on the recorded images. E, the violation took place during a period of time in which the motor vehicle had been reported as being stolen to a law enforcement unit and has not yet been recovered prior to the time of the violation. And F, the safety device was not in compliance with the calibration check. As we go on, there's what you typically do see, a post-assessment procedure to be able to obtain a Superior Court judgment for the fines and the right to appeal the assessment. That's in 190-10. Something else unique to this ordinance and statute, the disclosure of personally identifiable information, because obviously that would be a concern because you're taking photographs of images, they're going to show potential person and so on and so forth. No personally identifiable information shall be disclosed by the town or a vendor to any person or entity, including any law enforcement unit, except where the disclosure is made in connection with the charging, collection, enforcement, and fines imposed pursuant to the ordinance. No personally identifiable information shall be stored or retained by the town or vendor unless such information is necessary for the charging, collection, enforcement, and fines imposed pursuant to the ordinance. The town or vendor shall destroy all personally identifiable information and other data that is specifically identifies a motor vehicle and relates to a violation of this ordinance not later than thirty days after any fund is collected, or the resolution of a hearing conducted for the alleged commission of such violation, whichever is later, except the town or a vendor may retain a portion of personally identifiable information for the limited purpose of determining whether an owner committed a second or subsequent violation of this ordinance. In such instance, the town or a vendor shall destroy any retained portion of the personally identifiable information not later than one year after the date of such owner's most recent violation. And any information or other data gathered from the device shall be subject to disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act, except no personally identifiable information may be disclosed. And, you know, we're very careful about that, always checking that. So there's a compliance section with the statute that provides the authority, a severability. If a portion of the statute was determined to be invalid, then the rest remains in effect, a repealer. And then the effective date, the ordinance effective date, it's fifteen days after the publication of a summary of the ordinance in a newspaper having a general circulation in the town. Those are my comments, and I don't know if the chief or Altman would like to make any comments at this point. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Capola. If, if we could make a bit of an effort here to keep the chatter down, people are going to be speaking, and it's important that we be able to hear what people are saying. So thank you, thank you in advance for that. Would one of the police officers like to speak now, or did you want to?
We can wait for public comment.
Okay, that, that's where we're at now. Okay, so, yeah, it's up to you. I'm sure, I'm seeing a couple hands go up if you wanted to. Sally, I saw your hand go up.
Sally Boymi, Five Blossom Drive. It's nice to see so many people here. Usually when we have town meetings here, there's three or four people. So this is great to have so many people interested in town safety. I am in support of this ordinance. I hear from constituents all the time complaining about speed, about going through red lights. So I am generally in favor of this endeavor to help control speeding and, and going through red lights. So I do understand that much of the, many of the provisions in this act are governed by Public Act 23-116. You know, because I, my first reaction to the, the fifty-dollar fine seemed low, but that's what the Public Act limits it to, unfortunately. And it also is unfortunate, in my opinion, that, you know, if, if you get, if you're over ten miles an hour, the speed limit, you, you could get hit with a violation. And if you're over fifty miles over the speed limit, it's still the fifty dollars. So that concerned me, but again, we're, we are, as a municipality, constrained by the Public Act, and so that's how it goes. I'm just trying to figure out the number of folks we need to have appointed to do all of this, and it seems that we have three, maybe four. Certainly, we have a device operator, which is in 190, 190.4, which is the one who identifies violations. And then 190.6, there's a review official who reviews the recorded images and should be a town, an employee of the police department. There's a third one in 190, 190-6E, which is the citation hearing officer who assesses the monetary penalties. My question for town council is, in 190-8, there is another reference to, which has to do with your right to a hearing. It also references a citation hearing officer. So my question is, and that's the exact same term that we saw in the one that I just mentioned, who does the assessment. Is that, you know, due process tells me that should be a different person. You can't be the one deciding if there's a monetary penalty and then also the one deciding the, the hearing. Does it have to be a separate person?
Oh, no, it is the same person.
It is, okay. I wasn't clear. So the citation hearing officer in 190.8, who, who hears the hearing, is the same one in 1, 190-6E, is the same citation hearing officer who assesses the penalty?
So I should probably be on the microphone. Okay, sure. So pursuant to 7-152(c), the, the assessment is entered at the end of the hearing. So that citation hearing officer proceeding is used in any ordinance enforcement proceeding. So sometimes we see it with certain blight, that's not your procedure in this town, but, but with certain blight enforcement, with certain building code enforcement, with certain, you know, certain, even wetlands, zoning enforcement, violation of regulations and so on, so forth. They, they run the, the actual hearing itself, and then they assess at the end. So they're making a determination on the total amount of the fines ultimately, if, again, if somebody seeks to challenge.
Right. See, if you look at the-
It's an exercise in the right to appeal.
I got it. If you look at the language in 190-6E, it talks about the citation hearing officer appointed to enter the assessment if such owner does not exercise a hearing. So that made me think that was before the hearing. But now you're saying, no, it's the same person.
Twenty seconds.
Okay. Does that includes the, her comments?
So they do-
You know what I'm saying? That was my confusion.
Okay, okay, I understand. They do enter an assessment. If, if there's a desire by the municipality to go forward, to have an assessment, because then the next step is to be able to have a judgment entered by the court to execute upon.
And that's time.
Well, I, can I, since some of the time was used for her explanation, can I ask one question?
We have a room full of people.
So her comments is part of my five minutes? I just want to know if we have enough personnel to handle these three positions. That's my question for the police department.
Yes, we will have enough personnel to handle it.
Thank you.
Would someone else like to speak? Yes, in the pink shirt. And please be mindful and speak into the microphone. We just want to make sure that this is audible for everyone.
Mary White, Summer Lane. I am in favor of this. Actually, my husband, Tom, and I are both in favor of this ordinance, and we've actually experienced them when we traveled to visit friends in Rhode Island. So we've actually seen the signs, they, they warn you, the cameras, you know, are, they're coming up. So it did slope everybody down. Okay, so I have two questions. The first one is, are these automatic traffic safety devices solely for the traffic lights at intersections? Is that what we're talking about solely?
Who would like to address this?
Traffic intersections or connected to traffic lights.
Okay, so what are they, like specifically? Because when we were in Rhode Island, they were, like, here's the traffic light, and then you can see the little device, like, on the, the horizontal pole. So that's not this?
No, these are not going to be tied to traffic control signals or at specific intersections. These are going to be spans of roadway where we-
Excuse me, chief, could you come up and speak into the microphone?
Sure.
Sure.
So these aren't going to be tied to intersections or traffic control signals, per se. These will be at spans of roadway where we've identified problem driving behaviors that we're trying to correct. Typically, school zones is what we've been looking at to start this program. So it's not going to be where you see a traffic control signal, but you'll clearly see signage not only for a school zone, but that speed enforcement by camera is approaching. And as stated, there'll also be a thirty-day warning period ahead of time. So you may get what would look maybe like a ticket in the mail, but it's just going to be a warning that your vehicle was captured in excess of ten miles per hour. You would have been cited, but we're doing a thirty-day warning period to begin with.
Thank you.
Sure.
So my, my second question is, based on other towns who have the automatic traffic safety devices currently, what does the data show as to how often these devices have gone out of compliance with calibration?
Hi, Jason Norton with Altman. So every, on an annual basis, the radars are taken out of the machines and sent to a third-party validation for calibration. In your evidence package, if you go for a hearing, it will, that calibration certificate will be inside and is part of the evidence package for any violation.
Thanks.
Thank you, and that's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Nancy Barrett, One Crestview Drive. I just, first of all, I want to say I completely support this, this proposal, this resolution. I just had two quick questions. First of all, I, I know that we haven't developed the plan yet, but I just wondered if we could have local resident representation on the planning committee. I think it's wonderful. Certainly, we should have representatives from not only our police department, but also the Police Commission, certainly traffic safety officers, but I think it's also important to have the voice of the local residents, particularly perhaps a representative from each of the school zones that serves on the actual planning committee, that has a voice in the development of the plan. And second, my, my second question is, approximately how many devices are we, are we talking about as part of this overall plan? Or is that yet to be determined?
The approximate number of devices is still kind of yet to be determined, but you'll typically see two devices per school zone. So there's one at essentially each, each end. We're not looking to capture the front of vehicles. We don't want to get pictures of operators themselves. So it's going to be the back end of the vehicle, so that's why we'll be on each end. So you'll have a minimum of two cameras at each location. For now, we're looking at, as we said, school zones in particular to start with, kind of just a proof of concept, see how the program functions, the reliability of it, and then expand it from there if we think that that's appropriate.
And is there, like, a, a dollar limit on the number of pairs of devices that we're, we're shooting for, at least for this initial program?
So the, the vendor can speak more to that, but there's, as far as, like, dollar amounts, there's no upfront cost to us. This is going to be violator-funded, so the town itself is not going to be paying any upfront costs.
Okay, so the installation of these devices and so forth, there'll be no cost?
Correct.
And ultimately, any fees that we capture will be going to the vendor? Is that?
No, we'll be getting the violation fees, there's some processing fees that the vendors will accept, but we will get the, actually, the fine itself. And as far as the initial concept of the program, and Marty, you or Jason could speak to this, but the initial startup cost, we still won't pay upfront for that. The money that gets renovated, generated, will kind of back pay what the initial startup cost. So the first month, let's say, where we would have brought in revenue, we won't in order to pay the vendor for the equipment they supplied ahead of time. It's all violator-funded, there should be no upfront costs to the town.
Sure, that's great news. And if Mr. Frida or whoever is putting together this development plan, if you could consider perhaps selecting people from the neighborhoods in which these devices will be installed, I think having that voice as part of this process is, is extremely important, so.
All right, we'll talk to the police department.
Great, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Do I see, oh, I do see hands, okay.
Toby Espo wood, Arrowhead Road. Just one quick question about the devices. Won't you take the picture? And if the party does not live here in North Haven or in out of state, what's going to happen in that circumstance? So we have a lot of Florida people and whatever.
That's okay, that's okay. The same thing's going to happen to them that's going to happen to somebody here. And so it, it doesn't matter if you're out of state, it's the same process. So picture the violation happens, grab the plate. Plate goes to the DMV, information comes back. So it's plate one, two, three, John Smith. John Smith is in Florida, John Smith is in Connecticut, wherever the case may be. And that violation, after the police review, and only the police can review and approve a violation, if they approve it, it goes to the registered owner of the vehicle regardless of where they live.
If they're accepting the ordinance in their state?
Nope, doesn't matter. Because they're violating your law.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? Of you, sir?
Yep.
Yes. I'm just curious, I'm also, besides being town clerk, I'm also the tax collector in town. And when, let's say, a taxpayer doesn't pay their taxes for motor vehicles, I, it's allowed for me to report them to DMV, and that holds up their registration. Would this in any way be involved with DMV? My understanding is not.
Only just to get the registered owner information, but no, you know, no registration problems, it's not going to put a block on your registration hold or anything like that, if that's what you're asking.
Excellent, I thank you very much.
And I saw a hand, I see that same hand again, sir, with the beret.
Hi, Tim Gabriel, Renee Lane. I think most of my questions were answered, so I just have one more. The term violation is kind of being used broadly. Is it just speeding violations that are captured and automated, or like if some- Or like, if somebody, like, is reckless driving, going through a stop sign or something like that, does any of that get covered or investigated through the captured pictures?
These are just speeding violations.
Okay. Thank you.
I just do want to clarify that, as I indicated when I presented the ordinance, it does allow for red light violations, but that's up to the municipality what they put in the plan. So, that is in the ordinance to authorize that if eventually at some point in time the, because you have to have it. If at some point in time, the town decides that you want to include that as part of your plan, then it is there, that authority is there. Okay? So, the, the ordinance was written to provide the, the full authority allowed by the statute.
Yes?
Bill Piper, 28 Basset Road, and I'm clearly also in favor of this ordinance. The question, you know, the question I have, though, I think which we were talking about earlier, was in, in section 190-10, if they don't pay the fine, it looks like there's a lien on the car, which the clerk can see. How does the town enforce that lien? It's under 190-10A. Because it does clearly, and I think we were talking about that issue, within the, clerk shall enter judgment, the amount of such record of assessment, and the court cost of $8 against such owner in favor of the town. So, I think our clerk, our town clerk would need to do that.
So, the clerk that's being referred to, if I can just, I should-
Oh, sure, please do.
Thank you. The clerk that's being referred to in this section is actually a clerk of the Superior Court. Because that's the procedure that if, if the town, if it becomes necessary for the town to pursue a judgment, if somebody appeals and it goes through the citation, hearing officer process, and the citation hearing officer enters an assessment, then this is the next step to, to get that assessment recognized as a judgment, so that way it could be pursued. So, that's the clerk that's being referred to in this section of entering the judgment is, is a clerk at the court, not your town clerk.
But if it's recorded by, if it's not recorded with the DMV, and somebody doesn't pay the fine, and there are multiple fines, how do we actually then get a judgment and maybe actually be able to get a lien and actually impound their car?
So, I don't, I don't know about all of the impoundment of the car, because I-
How are we going to perfect our, our, how are we going to perfect the collection of fees?
In terms of pursuing any judgment, we would use all methods that are allowed pursuant to statu, statute. So, if we have a judgment, we would look to execute upon the judgment, and there's methods of doing that, that we use in other matters. It's, you know, you, you could potentially get a financial institution execution where you try to execute against a bank account. You can pursue other methods as well. So, yeah, it would, it would, there's nothing unique about the execution process. It would be the typical civil execution process that you would follow.
Which would be very mo, which would be very difficult if it was out of state, though, for us to actually pursue that, run out of state car, in terms of being cost-effective. So, okay. Just wanted to know how, you know, how we actually get the money after somebody has been fined if they ignore the, ignore it.
So, when you have a judgment against somebody who's out of state, you can domesticate the judgment in the other state? And that would involve hiring somebody to domesticate that judgment and pursue that individual, if in fact they're living out of state. You know, obviously, we oftentimes have circumstances where, and I know this has been an issue in many towns of a lot of contention, where people are registering their vehicles out of state but living in town. You know, I, I won't tell you all my secrets of execution tonight, but we have methods of dealing with those folks.
Thank you for, thank you for confirming that we do have some recourse if people don't pay. That was my big concern was, you know, how do we actually, I think most people will pay, you know, and are, but there are some who won't. So, but thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see a hand there, sir, in the plaid shirt.
I'm White, Summer Lane. I'm concerned about the appeal process. Is it a, is it a motor vehicle infraction that's going to be issued for the violation? Or is it a local, so it's a local infraction of local citation?
You'd be violating the town ordinance that we passed tonight if it's approved.
So-
It has nothing to do with the centralized infraction bureau.
Okay.
No points on your license, no effect to your insurance, your registration. It's violating a town ordinance.
Okay, so now, in the appeal process, say, stolen vehicle, misuse of a plate or something like that, how long after the citation is received by the owner do they have before it goes into any kind of trouble as far as lack of payment? You know, having that hearing process, how long does the owner have to respond? Is it to the police department?
There's a 10-day from the time you receive the violation in mail, it means 10 days to request an appeal.
So, it, is it, and is it by phone, or does it have to be mailed back? Do we have to be concerned about, you know, loss of mail or anything like that? Does it have to be, you know, the police department have to be contacted? That I'd like to appeal for whatever reason, and, and the hearing gets scheduled?
So, again, it is, it is in the ordinance, the, the right to contest the violation, the request, the hearing would be contained in the citation itself. And it is, as, as indicated by the chief, it is a 10-day appeal period from-
I can hear you. Jenny, can you hear me?
I'm sorry. Excuse me. So, it is a 10-day from the, of the citation appeal period. And the citation, again, it is mailed. That, that is the means by which it, it is generated.
I mean, yeah, and I was concerned about, you know, once you receive it, how do you stage the appeal? Do you mail it back and then wait for that?
So-
Like the timer, or do you call?
So, it is, it is in, again, it is in section 190-8, in that first paragraph that you do notify of the fact that you want to exercise your right to appeal. There is direction-
Yeah. Small caveat on that. On, when you get the citation that gets sent to you, you have the instructions on the hearing, and you can use that actual citation to submit for, a request for a hearing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I was just wondering how it's done. Is it going to be mailing it back if you're looking for the appeal, or do you call?
You can mail, but we also have an 800 number that we answer that we can help, you know, anyone go through any of the process.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
May I have a question for our, our chief? I look at this ordinance as being for safety, not really for revenue. But I'm just curious, the payments, or excuse me, the fines for other violations in town, what percentage of these violations do you actually collect?
The Central Infraction Bureau takes the majority of the infractions that we-
But what would you say on, on-
It's a small percentage, single digits.
Oh, is it really?
Yeah.
So, I would say this is more of a safety measure as opposed to any type of revenue-generating scheme?
Yeah, we're, we're not doing this to create revenue. We're doing this to curb poor driving behaviors. And some of the data that we've seen so far is that there are problems specifically in school zones with how people in North Haven are driving. So, we hope that this doesn't make much money. And that way, people are slowing down. That's the purpose of this, is to slow people down in our school zones. And there's no upfront cost, so if it doesn't make money, it's not going to affect North Haven. We don't view that as a failed project. That means it's successful, because if it's not making money, then people aren't speeding.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes?
Brian Testa Maple Avenue. I'm going to take a different approach with this tonight. What do this ordinance and a complaint that was at the last Board of Select meeting, Crane and Rowan, the pickleball courts have in common? It's forcing our local government to enforce common sense and civility. The pickleball court situation that came to the mic last month, our town put the pickleball courts up for everybody to use, and then people abused this nice pickleball courts, a parking noise, just overall civility. Same thing with this traffic ordinance that we're trying to do. Most people have no idea what their speed limits are on the streets. People don't realize it's 35 miles an hour on Washington Avenue. Most secondary roads are 25. Some roads are 30. And our new cars, and our dashboards, it'll show the speed limit on the dash. How many people look at that dashboard? Not me. Lately, I have. Coming off of 40 connector, 50, I think it is. You come around that corner, come on to Bailey Road, goes down to 30, goes down to 25 in the speed, uh, the school zone. We are forcing our governments common, to legislate common sense that we all know. My two-year-old car, I'm driving on a road, I have no idea I'm doing 50 on Washington Avenue. Don't mean to. My 20-year-old pickup truck, it's telling me I'm doing 50 on Washington Avenue. Point is, is that we're going to have to situational, situational awareness, meaning where we are, how we're traveling. They're going to put it in the school zones, where we all know it comes down from 35 to 25 in that school zone. Ridge Road, Upper State Street, very easy to do 40, 50 miles an hour. We don't even realize it. We're going to have to start doing that. And it's going to catch a lot of us who are just traveling, even being distracted or just traveling, because our cars are just nice and the roads are nice and smooth. But we've come to that point now that we're forcing our legislative bodies to legislate common sense. I'm reluctantly going to endorse and vote for this, because it is a safety factor. We just had a accident over this past weekend where somebody was killed. I don't know what all the circumstances were with it, but a lot of times it's speed, distraction, just not aware of our situation. I believe about three, four years ago on Upper State Street, we had a resident killed, walking with their children and their dog. Speed was a factor, and not paying attention. A lot of it's happening. So, we've, as we move forward in life itself, this is what we're happening. This is why this ordinance is being implemented, to slow us down. I believe it'll work. It's going to catch some of us, and we're going to be upset that we got a thing in the mail saying, "I was only doing 40." Well, the speed limit was 30. Got to start watching where we're going. And most likely, it's going to expand, because they're going to find out that on State Street, Spring Road, Pool Road, Upper State Street, Rourke Road, I could name a bunch of roads where people are driving well above the speed limit and putting people's lives in danger, children, pets. We've come to that, unfortunately. So, I'm reluctantly going to vote for it, and, and hopefully, it will teach us all to slow down in our small little town. If not, there's going to be a lot of upset people getting these tickets in the mail. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, in the back?
Paul D'Amico, 60 Potter Road. Listen, I am not in support of this. Sorry. This sounds like a money grab, just another tax on us, community, our, we're all residents here. It's a tax. So, if you're doing 10, 15 miles an hour over a speed limit, they're going to tax you. Now, why do that? I'd maybe tax other people that come, New Haven, East Haven, West Haven, people that come flying through our town, 100%. But as you said, you said there's an ordinance or, or something going in wording that was going to be red light cameras soon. So, if this does work, and they do generate revenue for the town, now you're going red light cameras. So, no, it's just, it's just, it's an endless cycle, and I'm just not in support of it. It's just, I mean, and the speed limits now are, they were set in the 60s and 70s when cars didn't stop. They, there, there's so much new technology out there that stops the car, prevents the car. Yes, I agree. Everybody goes over the speed limit. But the limits should be bumped up by 10 miles an hour, 15 miles an hour. I get the school zone thing, I still, I'm not in support of it. It seems like it's just another tax, a money grab. Again, you said it's not going towards our license or anything, so then why are you doing it? Maybe it should go towards our license. You know, if I'm driving like a lunatic or something down in a school zone, and you pop me, the camera pops me, well, now it should go. Well, he was doing 40 miles an hour in a school zone. Well, that should go to my license, because that's definitely not. You know, that's, that's wrong. But again, I think the, the limits should be bumped up, and I don't know if that, how that works or whatever, but I'm just not, I'm not supporting this. I'm sorry, it seems like a money grab.
Excuse me, sir, I didn't get your name.
Paul D'Amico, 60 Potter Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? I see a lady in the way back over there.
Alyssa D'Amico, 60 Potter Road. That wasn't planned. I'm not in support of it. I'm not in support of this, but not for the same reasons as my husband. I, I don't necessarily think it's a money grab, but I do believe in, like, government watching you, and if you guys are doing your jobs, then you should catch me speeding, right? Not the camera. My question, though, however, is, there's a lot of roads in North Haven that do not have proper signage showing what the speed limit actually is. Sackett Point Road, I think, is one of them, for sure. So, I have a new, brand-new teenage driver who is not supposed to use any phone devices or anything to tell him what speed limits are. I know you say it's just in school zones right now, but it's not going to be eventually. It's going to be everywhere. So, when he's driving down the road, I want him to be safe in driving. Yes, he may go over the speed limit just because, all right? But if he's looking down at his phone on ways to try and get what the speed limit is, that's also dangerous. So, if you're going to do this, which I'm not in support of, but if you are going to do it, then please make sure that things are marked properly, because there's plenty of roads where they are not. And that would not be cool if my son gets into an accident, because he was more worried about what the speed limit sign, what's, what's the speed limit here? Oh, my God, versus a camera.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Jerry Feinberg, 34 Brockett Farm Road. I'm also concerned about having a government eye in the sky, and for that reason, I've got some questions. So, it looks like we already have a vendor. I see a gentleman with a shirt that looks like it says Ultimate. Is Ultimate the vendor? Okay. So, was this contract put out to bid?
They've been awarded the Capital Region Council of Government award, so it's essentially considered almost like a state contract.
All right. What are the projected costs for the first 12 months of the system? I understand it's not supposed to be free to us, but there are costs that are involved. And I don't know what's in the contract. If they don't, if their costs exceed what the revenue is, I'm going to assume that they're going to want to recapture that money. So, either, either on a per-unit basis or on an overall basis, what are the costs?
Yeah, so the, the-
Yeah, sir, if you could come forward to the microphone.
Great question. Part of the Council of Government-
State your name, please.
I'm Marty Plank from Ultimate. Part of the Council of Government contract, there is a cost neutrality clause, so there is never going to be a charge to North Haven.
Okay, so, again, just, just, it's belt and suspenders. No way, no how. So just, just belting suspenders, no way, no how, if you don't make money on this, are the taxpayers in this town gonna be able to hook? Okay. While you're up here, nobody's given us a walkthrough how this system is supposed to work. So there's gonna be a camera hanging up somewhere that's gonna collect data. Where's the data gonna go? And what's the relationship between Altimate and the police department as far as the procedure that's gonna be followed for issuing a citation, collecting the citation, all that other stuff?
So we'll follow the state law. You know, that's the key. But it, there's no data captured unless you're speeding. So if you're going 10 miles an hour or more over the speed limit, we're gonna capture the back of the plate, and we're gonna issue a ticket to that individual. That's it. There's not data going back and forth.
So we as Altimate, we as not the North Haven Police Department?
No, North Haven, no. North Haven Police Department will 100% sign off on every single ticket.
But who's actually issuing it? And who's doing the mailing?
We do the mailings. We pay for the permitting, the power, everything to the system.
And when you put this proposal together, what did you project?
Sir, can you step back up to the mic, please?
When you put the proposal together, what did you protect, project, let's say, your first year revenue for however number of locations the police department is gonna select is gonna be? Do you have a revenue projection?
No. I mean, there, we didn't put it together. The Council of Governments put out a RFP, the Capital Region, which 145 municipalities can buy off of. They were the ones that put out the RFP with the requirements. We submitted our bid, and we won that bid. That's how that happened.
So are you the operator of the system?
Me personally?
Well, in our ordinance, it describes an operator of the system, and I wanna know if the operator of the system is gonna be a town employee or if it's gonna be somebody from Altimate.
It's gonna, yeah.
Altimate?
It's Altimate, yeah, 100%.
Okay. Question for the town attorney. So there have been some questions raised about the appeals process here, and there's a hearing officer that's described in the ordinance. What are the criteria for selecting a hearing officer? And is the hearing officer gonna be compensated?
So typically, the hearing officers are appointed in, this instance, it would be by the Board of Selectmen. That's the typical recommendation that is made. And they typically serve without remuneration, in my experience. The town has had hearing officers in the past. I believe, I currently work with hearing officers in other towns, and they are not compensated. They do it on a volunteer basis. You know, they are oftentimes attorneys that live in town, but they do not have to be an attorney.
Okay. I'll wrap up with this. There's a provision in here that requires a plan to be developed, and there was discussion of a consultant. We haven't been told who that consultant might be. Perhaps it's Altimate. We also haven't been told what the cost of a consultant would be. For folks who are interested, you can go on the Connecticut Department of Transportation website, which our town attorney...
And that's time.
Okay. There's a cost to it, that's all.
Sir?
My name is William Espowood from North Haven, Connecticut, on Arrowhead Road.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't get your name.
William Espowood, E-S-P-O-W-O-D.
Thank you.
I've traveled all four corners of this state. I've seen cities with bumps. Now, if you go 40 miles an hour and you hit one of those bumps, you hit a tree. I don't think we really want that in this town. I think we want common sense. This proposal hits it as a good starting point. Being on Rock Road by the Monowies Elementary School, and Toby and I walk to the school often off of Arrowhead to the Monowies Elementary School, seeing cars go by at 50 miles an hour for only a half a mile, but the point being is, there's a soccer field just to the left of the road with usually 150 people every other day having fun. If they were to go across the street and with all those cars that park there, which is slowing down, and get hit, it would be a disaster. The bumps are not the reason, but this idea is fantastic. So if it goes to continuation, please give it 100% support.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have another question, I'm sorry, for both of you. And the town attorney who suggested the certain areas that these devices will be placed. When you do the planning commission or the group that gets together and develops a plan, is it possible to have other places where you might put the device beyond what you've already?
So the ordinance allows for areas outside of school zones for this to happen?
Right.
Right now, our focus is gonna be just on the school zones, possibly one other area, but that's still up in the air. Our primary focus is school zones.
And will there be an opportunity for suggestions to the police department of places that might be a necessity?
There could be. We'd have to kinda have discussion during the planning phase.
Because the reason I say this is we have a severe speeding problem on the main road in front of Town Hall. I can tell you...
My guess is a lot of people are gonna have speeding problems that they believe are in their neighborhood, and we don't wanna have these in every neighborhood, but we want them where they're appropriate and where they're needed. So we'll take a good look at it, and we're always open to input and feedback from people. But we won't be able to satisfy everybody's need because everyone is gonna want this on the street near their house where they see speeding. But we don't wanna have cameras on every corner, but we do wanna see some type of way where we can curb this. And we do our best to run radar, but we can't be at every problem area at the same time. This doesn't replace police officers running radar. We're still gonna be out there doing enforcement, but it supplements it, and it allows officers who then wouldn't have to be near the middle school to be somewhere else working on crime, suspicious activity, or radar in an area where there might not be a camera. So it doesn't replace what we're doing, it just supplements to it.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, one last question, and I promise I'll stop. Does the difference between a state road versus a town road, does that play in any way significance in this new ordinance?
So obviously, it doesn't authorize the town to put anything on a state road.
Right.
But you may see that the state is gonna be utilizing this as well.
So...
Because that's provided for.
Okay. Thank you.
So you may, you may start to see signs on state roads as well.
Chief, I have a question for you. Does that mean you're gonna take...
Excuse me, sir. Not everyone has spoken first. You need to wait for everybody to finish the first time, and then you have a second chance. In the back.
Kristy Keough, 17 Ball Road. I have some questions before I can make my mind up. If we're mostly concerned about school zones, and there are particular times when those school zones are most active, right, when kids are getting there and when they're leaving, I fully support at every town budget meeting our police officers. So why can there not be the police officers running radar at those specific times? Do we not have enough police officers on the force to be doing that job that I would feel much better about than a camera that could be getting it wrong or like Big Brother watching? I want you guys doing that because I support you. So I need a little more understanding from the police department as to why there aren't enough officers handling this supposed major problem at these particular times. I guess I need to hear a little bit more clarification.
I don't know if it would be an appropriate allocation of our manpower to have a police officer at every school morning, afternoon, and that's assuming you know when the speeding is gonna happen. Speeding happens in school zones at all random times. These cameras are gonna be up 24/7, so it's like having a police officer there all the time. For us to put an officer every morning at each school and then every afternoon at each school, I mean, things happen at that time also. There's still domestic violence, and there's burglaries, and there's people in car accidents, and there's mental health issues. So it frees up some of our people to do other tasks while still enforcing speed violations at those areas.
But during the drop-off and dismissal of middle school and high school, so you would have to have an officer at the middle school, high school area, that takes care, that's one officer kind of in that area, and then the four elementary schools are at a different time? We don't have enough officers to be one at each location?
I wouldn't wanna have five police officers in the morning that are just doing radar when there's technology that we can use to do the equivalent. And it's actually gonna be cheaper for the person who gets the ticket because depending on your speed, like it was mentioned earlier, if you're doing 11 miles per hour over or you're doing 30 miles per hour over, you're gonna get the same ticket. When a police officer stops you, if you're going 30 over, it's basically, it's like an escalator. They'll look at how many miles per hour you were over the limit, and they do some simple math, and they come up with a number which is gonna be significantly higher than $50 or $75. I know no one likes to get a ticket, but a ticket from the camera is gonna be a cheaper ticket if we're out there giving the ticket.
Well, I guess I just, I'm worried that we're gonna start at school zones, but then we're not gonna stop there. And then it's gonna turn into that whole Big Brother is watching our small town, and that I just cannot support.
And from the Big Brother side of it, that's one reason why we agree with Altimate as far as photographs of the front end of the vehicle. We're not looking to capture people's images and get into the world of facial recognition and who's the actual driver. That's why it's the back of the vehicle only and the registered owner of the vehicle through DMV files. So we understand that.
Yeah, I just...
It's a valid concern.
Yeah, because it's yet, like, we're not gonna look at the front of the vehicle yet. That's my concern.
Yeah, it's a valid concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Burns, 66 St. John Street. I'd like to say right from the outset, I support you guys 100% as do the fire department, Public Works, Town Hall, everyone in the town, I love the town. I'm a newcomer, only been here 25 years. I came here today to just learn about what was, everything was being talked about. And I understand about speed in town and, I mean, I get it. My only thing is, you read the paper, you look at the news, you see all this stuff, and Town of Washington's making $380,000 in three weeks. The Town of Middletown is raising X amount of dollars. For the people outside, it looks like the gentleman in the back had said, "You're just looking to raise funds." So I have two questions. One, if you get a ticket from these guys' cameras, does it have a photo? Does it show your actual speed? Shows you your actual violation in a photo so you know when you get your ticket what you're appealing? When you go, you could actually see it?
Yes.
All right. I mean, I didn't know that. You know, nobody explained this to us. We're just trying to learn all this stuff here. So I don't know, my only thing is if we're gonna raise money from this, and it's not gonna cost us anything, we said, eventually, will it go back to us, taxpayers? In some how, some way, I know it may be struck, you know, well, first of all, let me say, I don't think I'm gonna get a ticket. Okay?
Happy about that.
But I mean, if and when the General Assembly allows you to move, because towns are making some big money, will it come back to the residents of town in other ways?
In what way, John? What do you, how do you...
Well, I mean, we just had like an increase in taxes, and we just had an increase in sewer usage, and we had other increases. Will this help offset? Because if the town is, if we're gonna raise money, as we all know, with budgets, we raise money, and then, of course, we have to raise more money because the budget goes up more, and we gotta raise more money. Are we gonna start with 10 cameras and then go to 50, and then go to 100? I mean, what's the plan?
So let me try to explain it this way, John, okay? So eventually, the money will go back to the town, not in the form of a tax increase, in the form of eliminating future capital expenses that would have been designed for infrastructure upgrades anyway. So as was said earlier today, that what this means is that the money specifically by statute has to go into certain areas. Traffic enhancements, it could even go to paving.
Well, it's also, roads, rural property?
Transportation, yes. So it would go back that way, not necessarily in the form of a tax rebate, but in the form of saving future capital expenses.
Exactly. That's what was my question.
Yes, okay.
And I mean, if that is true, then that's benefit to the town. I mean, that's for the taxpayer.
If I can also mention, John, too, and this is for the audience, that what we're trying to do is slow speeding down, as our chief said. We're not, we hope there's no money raised, but we have a major crisis in town right now. People are complaining. People who have children, they can't go out in the street, they can't shoot a hoop in their driveway because of the reckless driving. So we're responding to the majority of the public that is saying, "Hey, Mike and Andrew and Town Hall, we gotta stop this. We don't feel safe. Our children don't feel safe."
Yes, everybody sees. Well, I have a question for the traffic officer. So just the other day, as a coincidence, I'm driving to get my grandson to Green Acres, and the school bus that's driving in front of me is driving with its flashers on. But he's continued to drive. Now, the people in the opposing lane have no idea what to do. Because when you see a school bus with its flashers, you're thinking, "I gotta stop." So people stop, and the bus is going by. I mean, you know...
You're talking about us?
No, I'm saying, you know, as a driver when I was a kid and younger with kids and everything else, when the school bus came, it'd stop in front of the house, put on a yellow, put on a red, it would open. Now I notice that school buses are driving quite a distance with their flasher flashing, which the people coming in the opposite direction...
30 seconds. Don't know how to respond.
I just, no, no, no. I'm just looking to respond. I started Deepascal, North Haven Police Traffic Division. So I've seen that as well, too. A lot of times, the bus drivers are putting on those yellows, and it's not a signal for a complete stop. It's a cautionary as they're coming to a stop to allow the cars that are coming either way to say, "Okay, I need to stop," or "I need to go through this," you know, because it's about to turn red. Yeah.
I think it's confusing for the people in the opposing lane.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
And that's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who has not spoken? I don't believe we've heard from you, sir. Come on up.
My name is John Hammond. I live on Maiden Lane here in North Haven. I'm a commercial driver. I drive about 150,000 miles a year. I'm 150% behind this program. This town needs it. It's a wonderful town. We have to make it safe. I do have a question that was asked before about the state road. Does Washington Avenue consider a state road? Can they put a camera on that without the state approval or...
They have to have state...
And in the beginning, I heard the three letters DOT. My heart sank. Because when we deal anything with the state, instead of five days, it's 30 days. Now, if it goes to the state, they said they have 60 days to approve it. Can they have to approve the whole package, or can they break it down?
They could send it back for more data or revisions.
And they have another 60 days again?
Yeah.
That's bad. Bad. I did get a speeding ticket in Queens, New York by a camera. I was shocked, and I was like, "I deserve it. I'm not gonna fight it. It's not worth it. $50 paid." If someone gets a ticket when they're renting a car, does it go through the car rental company and then back to the person? And they only have so many days to pay that? Yeah, okay. But this town, real, every town needs to slow the cars down. Between exit 10 and exit 13 here in North Haven, all you have to do is sit out here and listen to the fire department going to every accident, either on 91 or Route 15. And they're putting their lives in their hands. How many fire trucks have been hit on 91? We have to slow down, people. We really do. And it's not about us, it's about the little ones. We talked about the schools. North Haven's school system is tremendous. The town is tremendous. The police department is tremendous. Just a couple weeks ago, they had the community police, the area towns, working here in North Haven. We talk about common sense. You have three stop signs, one on Broadway, two on State Street. How many cars were pulled over for not stopping at a stop sign? Route 22? It's awful. It's awful up there. Try and take a left coming down 22 to get onto 91 at the entrance of 91. Your life is in your hands there. We have to slow down. Common sense, that's all it is. We shouldn't have... We shouldn't have to worry about a fifty-dollar ticket, because we know when we're speeding, we have to slow down. That's all I ask of everyone, and I thank everyone for showing up. I'm one-hundred-and-fifty percent behind this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. In the interest of being able to address everything on our agenda tonight, I want to ask if there's anyone who has any other opinion that has not yet been stated. Alex, come on up.
Alex Johnson, Fallon Drive. Apologies for whispering earlier. I was trying to find out where this was. Got here late. I have a couple of questions, mainly for you guys. When someone violates an ordinance, how much time beforehand, how much time during, and how much time after is the recording and the photo taken? Also, how wide of a view is that camera? I'll form my opinion after. I'll let you answer that.
So for the speeding, it's just, it's basic. It's time over distance, right? So it's a spot here, it's a spot here. How fast does it take the car to get from here to there? And that's your field of view, if that was your question. It will also come with a video, so you can watch a video. Now, it's hard to tell. I can watch NASCAR, and I have no idea that they're going two-hundred or fifty, because I don't have a point of reference. But you will have a video, and you'll have photos, as the gentleman asked. You'll have a color photo of your car and the license plate. That's your question.
Then my question would be more for the town attorney. In terms of hearing, would it be your traditional, where you go before this person that's supposed to take the hearings? Is it like when you go into a court? What is that supposed to look like for an appeal?
So there is a whole section. I can give that to you to read.
I read, but I was still not certain.
Okay. So it's a quasi-judicial proceeding. It's less formal than a courtroom setting. But there are provisions that were in the statute about some of the evidence that needs to come in. Like I mentioned earlier, you know, the calibration, there has to be a certificate as to when the device was, the device in question, the subject device, was last calibrated. So there's some of those elements in it. But, you know, the person appealing would be allowed to, you know, offer their own testimony. They'd be allowed to offer any documentary evidence that they'd like. You know, they'll be able to offer any testimony from any other persons that they'd like. You know, they have the ability to subpoena people to the proceeding, so there's all those elements. And the statute in question that allows for that process has been in place for a very lengthy period of time. And like I said, it applies to other types of municipal ordinances with regard to zoning enforcement and wetlands enforcement and such as well. So it's kind of a time-tested proceeding, if you will, that works well.
I'm not doubting the procedure, but do you mind maybe explaining that in more layman's terms? Like, are we walking to Town Hall? What do you mean by a quasi-legal system?
So typically, it would be, yes, in a town facility, absolutely. So, and, you know, there's ability to, I think, typically towns are very accommodating as far as, you know, time of hearing and if something occurs and a continuance is needed of a scheduled hearing or something like that. I have attended some of these hearings myself, just in observation. So, yeah, I mean, it's made to be convenient in that regard.
I was just asking for maybe more clarification for those who don't speak legalese.
Sure.
And then my final question would be to you guys, what is your level of security on your systems? Is there, what is the risk of hacking? Is there ability where people can continuously watch these cameras? Because there is nervous when you have children. We've had, I mean, last week, someone stole, who was their child, but was not the custodial parent, and that is a very high risk.
So we probably have technical people that can answer this a little bit better. But we RC just certified for all of our data, and it's a transfer.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. And so we transmit our data securely on that. There's no watching the videos. You know, would I love to tell you that we can't be hacked? You know, the Department of Defense has been hacked, you know, Pentagon's been hacked. I think anybody could probably get hacked if they wanted to as much. But we RC just certified on that, and we also go through inlets data for the DMV, which has a very strict, you know, security process on that as well, to get that information.
I'll save my time for the clinic.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to ask everyone in favor of calling the question for this agenda item.
She's already asked. You're going to let her ask, or you also have the opportunity?
Okay.
And you cut two of us off also, ending, everybody else completing their questions. So I think we're entitled, if we want to have a second chance.
Mary White, Summer Lane. My question is, can, excuse me, can an analysis and data be collected of the posted, or not posted, speed limited, speed limit signs on all roads in North Haven be done before the plan is developed so as to make sure all roads have sufficient signage, since it does appear that this plan will more than likely extend beyond school zones, therefore making it this the time to conduct such an analysis? So like the example given by the lady, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. Her son is driving, she doesn't, we don't, he doesn't see the speed limit signs, because there's not enough. So I think, I'd like an answer to that.
I'll take the first crack at it. So when, with Ultimate, when we put in a speed camera anywhere, we go through and we hire a third-party validator that does the testing. So obviously, we have the technology, but we always hire a third-party to come in and do a test. So do a review of where you're going to enforce. You know, here's what your data looks like. There's a thousand violations, there's ten violations, whatever the case may be. But a third-party independent study to do at any of those locations. In addition, if that, you know, if you proceed with those locations, you know, we also have two signs, Ms. Chris, I think that was your name, two warning signs going up to any place that's enforced, right? So you have to have the speed limit. You also have to have photo-enforced ahead, photo-enforced ahead before you get there. So that is helpful as well. I have a sixteen-year-old as well, so I'm in that place as well. So I think that's perhaps asking, answering your question of, all that data will be done before anything goes through. And then post, you know, six months, a year, you look at the results, like, it was a thousand violations, and now it's ten. I'm sure none of you follow me on LinkedIn, but this morning, I posted something from Florida, Sanibel, where we have a client as well, and they had a ninety-six percent reduction in their first school year. And, you know, that's dramatic. And if you look at our report card out of Florida, because they just finished their first school year, you know, ninety-six percent, ninety percent, eighty-six percent. To answer newcomer John's question about budget, I would warn everybody not to put any of this money into a budget to pay for anything, because the violations are going to drop. Revenue is going to drop. The cameras work, and they work quickly. Why do they work? Because you're here tonight. Every one of you will know about the speed camera. You have local media that's going to do it. You'll have social media on it. We'll probably have a press conference when you start it, so locals will know about this. It will be the out-of-towners who are coming buzzing through your city to get these tickets. So hopefully, that was a long-winded question to answer your question.
So the answer is no. That's how I got it. So what I wanted to know as a follow-up is, can we, at this time, can we make this request, or can the town, can we make this request to have this analysis and this data be done because of the future expansion? Can we make it happen, in other words? Because they're only doing the pinpointed areas, okay? That's what he said, which is the school zones.
I don't know who wants to take that one.
Mary, what type of analysis exactly do you want? That each road has proper signage?
Exactly, like what the lady was talking about. On Sackett Point, there's not enough signage, okay? So things like that. So in order to cover Sackett Point, which is not a school zone, we need to have the data, we have the analysis done, and then we have the data. So when this program expands, which maybe it won't, but I think it might, okay, we have the data. So this way, those signage that should be posted, however so often, depending on the length of the road or whatever, that it's already done, because I think it's a safety hazard not to have those signs, not to have those signs there. So it's kind of like a separate thing that should be addressed, could be addressed right now.
So we clearly can work with our traffic division to identify areas in town that don't have proper signage. We get calls from people all the time about sightline issues, signage requests that go through the local traffic authority. So that's something that we can look into, for sure. As far as the expansion of this program, if that does happen, if there's a new area where we're going to do this, like you mentioned, like it was mentioned, none of that happens without DOT approval, so we'll have to do an analysis of data. Otherwise, DOT won't allow us to put a device there. And if we do identify a new area, while we're doing that analysis and collecting data, we would review if there's proper signage there as well. We're not going to put this up and not have the posted speed limit near the area as well. So we certainly can look into doing that ahead of time, but no new areas are going to come into play without posted speed limit signage either being there already or installed and without a data set, because DMV wouldn't allow it, I'm sorry, DOT wouldn't allow it in the first place.
Okay. I think that's a maybe now.
Anyone else, sir?
Jerry Feinberg, thirty-four Bracket Farm Room. I try to be brief. So in addition to the cost for violating the ordinance, there's what's deemed to be a reasonable fee not to exceed fifteen dollars. Who's going to set the fee, and what is the fee going to be based on? Is it going to be based on cost of service, what their actual costs are? Are we going to be just plucking a number out of the air? Are we just, we're going to make it fifteen because that's what we can make it? And the other question is, how do we settle up? We're going to have a pool of money, let's call it fees, and they're going to have expenses. What's the procedure going to be for their recouping the expenses and our finance department, if that's who's going to be handling this, or the police department, determining whether those amounts are reasonable? That's one question.
Got a copy of your questions. They're cheap.
I've got your answers back.
Fair enough. So the fee structure is nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars per month per camera, okay? The city will retain the first thousand dollars in fine revenue, okay? So if we get down to, you know, speeding from a thousand violations down to one violation, and there's only one violation a month, and we are all up for the Nobel Peace Prize because we have solved speeding, city taxpayers will still not pay that monthly fee, because the city's getting the first thousand dollars in fine revenue, per month, per camera, over the entire system. The fifteen-dollar fee, we will collect as an electronic processing fee. It will go to Ultimate.
Again, for the town, Jerry Feinberg, for the town attorney. The ordinance, ordinance as it's drafted, doesn't say a fee of fifteen dollars. It says a fee not to exceed fifteen dollars. The representative of Ultimate is telling me that notwithstanding what the ordinance says, it's fifteen bucks. What's the case?
So I think the answer to that question is that the stat, that statutory language, because I'm sure you looked at the statute, that language rather, in that ordinance provision that you're mentioning, is directly from the statute. In my mind, okay, what should be transpiring is that part of the development of the plan should be looking at exactly what that fee is. Now, if they're saying that that's the fee that they charge, well, that's something that has to be taken into consideration. You know, I think some of this is ordinance-related, and some of it goes for the actual administration issues. We can't include every little procedure in ordinance. I mean, at the end of the day, so there are administrative decisions that need to be made as part of the development of the plan. And I think that that is an administrative decision, you know, what that cost is going to be. They, you know, they can do some looking into, is that reasonable and appropriate based upon, you know, what other towns are paying? Because we do have information with regard to that. So, you know, that's something, too, that's always looked at, even when, I mean, here we have statute dictating what the fine is, but if we had the ability to do something else with the fine, we would have done that, like worked before presenting it in the ordinance.
Okay, fair enough. Just one last comment and a question. So what we're doing here is we're basically changing the speed limit in town, at least in my opinion, in the areas where we're going to have these cameras set up. Let's say the speed limit in a school zone is twenty-five miles an hour. I can do thirty-nine, I can do thirty-four. I'm exceeding it by nine miles an hour. We're increasing the speed limit. So for Officer Deep Pascal, perhaps if this goes into effect, we might consider reducing the speed limit to fifteen in school zones if the ideal speed limit is what it's set now, which is twenty-five. That's just my comment.
All right. Thank you. Would anyone object if I turned the fan zones? It seems kind of hot. Oh, okay. It just seems hot.
Sir?
Chief, is there any cutoff on the?
Please come to the front, please, to the microphone, state your name, and speak into the microphone.
Paul D'Amico, Sixty Potter Road. Is there any cutoff, in other words, pop me two-hundred times? Is there a cap where you go, like, listen, I'm definitely, we're going to escalate this up to the next level?
No, I think at that point, we probably have, try to have some type of intervention with you. As far as I'm aware, there's no limit, you know, part of correcting people's behavior.
Yeah, are they? I don't remember.
Fifty tickets, and you learn that there's a device here that keeps ticketing me, and I'm going to slow down. Can we help people learn that quicker? Whether you're for this or against it, we're not looking to get people repeatedly ticketed. It's not what this is about, but there's no limit, so if somebody wants to fly by this.
So it is kind of like a money grab. So you would be trading the money for us. That's it.
If I keep, can I just be one comment?
Of course.
I think one of the things that folks are sort of overlooking here is that just because there's an ordinance that you could be violating, doesn't mean that there's not a law that you're also violating, that they can issue you an infraction for. So that they're not prohibited from issuing you an infraction. So factor that in, okay? That's, you know, we're kind of getting off into, that's the legal point. But you can track what my thinking is on this.
So you can't follow us around? You're suggesting, what? You can't follow us around if you want to.
Might you get popped for fifty violations?
Follow you out.
Sir, sir. You did, actually. Yes, you did. I've got the, stop it.
We're totally open to feedback and input.
And I'm going to call the question, all in favor of calling this question, this agenda item. I'm sorry? I need a motion to call the question. Sir? Okay. And, all right, all in favor? Is there, okay, I thought I was motioning, but okay. All right, misunderstanding. You motioned, sir, and Brian has seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Say nay. Got a handful of.
Three.
I got four. And, all right, this was on the question. We're not actually voting on the ordinance here. Okay. All right, so the motion passes. And, all right, the town clerk will now read the second item of the special town meeting agenda. We voted.
Well, that was on the question.
Oh, jeez. All right, I haven't had dinner. That's the problem, so. All right, so the call of the question, and all in favor?
No, no, we're voting on the actual resolution.
The resolution, okay. We are going to vote now on the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Can you just leave your hands up for one sec? Thank you.
Looks like we have five nay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
And now I will ask the town clerk to read the second item of the special town meeting agenda.
I'm still confused. Okay, yes, motion passes. There were four nays, but overall, where was the fifth one? Oh, I lean to your hand. Who was the fifth, yours?
One, two, three, four, and then the general five.
Okay, thank you. So the nays, the resolution passes. Let me just change my notes. And now we're going to move on to the second, the second agenda item tonight. If I can just get myself organized here. Okay. B, to consider and vote upon whether to adopt Article III of Chapter 190, Traffic in Motor Vehicles to the Ordinances of the Town of North Haven entitled School Bus Violation Enforcement, to authorize the use of a school bus violation enforcement system to improve public safety and reduce the incidence of vehicles illegally passing stopped school buses. Here's the resolution. Resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, the school bus violation enforcement ordinance is hereby approved and adopted at Article III of Chapter 190 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to authorize the use of a school bus violation enforcement system to improve public safety and reduce the incidence of vehicles illegally passing stopped school buses. A summary of the ordinance shall be published in a newspaper having a circulation in the Town of North Haven and shall be effective 15 days after publication. That is the resolution. Is there a second for the resolution?
Second.
And now we come to the point of meeting when we open the floor for discussions. And the rules for discussion are the same as before. You must come forward to the microphone, state your name and address before you begin to speak. Discussion again will be limited to this item only at this time. And we ask that you limit your questions and discussion to no longer than five minutes. And remember, after everyone has had a chance to speak, you may have another turn. And I also ask that please keep the chatter down when someone is at the microphone speaking. Mr. Frida?
All right, the second resolution, the second topic of discussion. Picture the scene, and it just happened. It was all over the news. Three young children getting off a bus. Stop sign up on the bus. Car speeding through, impugning the safety of those children who were getting off the bus. So this ordinance is designed to install cameras on school buses. There's another vendor, not the ones that are here tonight, another vendor who is monitoring this and has presented this to us. And it's called Bus Control. The idea here is to put cameras on buses. So if a stop sign comes up and people go through that stop sign as children are getting off the bus, or children are getting on the bus, there'll be a $250 fine. And I think, and I hope everyone feels the same way, because I know we had some disagreement on the first ordinance. The safety of our children through the Board of Education, through the bus company, is the most paramount thing right now, among the safety of our residents also. So I'm asking for consideration that this gets passed. You'll hear the ordinance from our town attorney. Again, this is designed to stop people from going through stop signs and buses that are stopped when the stop sign is deployed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Frida? Is there any discussion? Ms. Capola?
Thank you. So with regard to this ordinance, again, it's, the language is very, very tightly tied to the statute. There are a couple of different types of enforcement systems. And you're only allowed to have one. So the language is very important, that, again, it closely mirrors what the statutory language provides. So similar to the last ordinance, this has a declaration of purpose and authority. I think it's paragraph two there, for those of you who do have a copy, that, again, this sort of explains what the violation is, which originates in Section 14-429A of the General Statutes. It says this article is enacted pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 14-279CB1, that provides that municipalities may authorize the use of a municipal school bus violation enforcement system herein defined to enforce Connecticut General Statute, Section 14-279A, which requires in part, that the operator of any vehicle shall immediately bring such vehicle to a stop not less than 10 feet from the front when approaching, and not less than 10 feet from the rear when overtaking or following any registered school bus on any highway or private road, or in any parking area, or on any school property. When such bus is displaying flashing red signal lights and vehicles so stopped for a school bus shall not proceed until such school bus no longer displays flashing red signal lights. So that is an essence. You don't follow that rule, then you're violating this ordinance. And, you know, the procedure sort of operates similar to the safety devices we just talked about. So again, as the First Selectman indicated, the buses are going to be equipped with cameras, they're going to have signs on them, so you'll know that the device is in play. And a digital still or a video image is going to be produced by the enforcement system. And there are provisions somewhat similar to the last ordinance as far as the procedure to be followed. There is going to be a citation that issues. And the components of the citation, what needs to be included in the citation, is dictated by statute. And there's a provision, and this is in, then the sections are not numbered. So this follows, I will be doing, I will be doing that formatting if it does pass. We are going to potentially have another ordinance coming in before. So that's why when it was originally posted, it was not formatted with numbers. But on page four, it says, again, and this is the whole jurisdictional issue, in the case of, in the case of an alleged violation involving a motor vehicle registered in the state, the town or its designated agent shall send a copy of a citation to the owner of the motor vehicle observed in the alleged violation not later than 30 days after the date of the alleged violation. In the case of alleged violation involving a motor vehicle registered in another jurisdiction, the municipality or its designated agent shall send a copy of the citation to the address of the owner that is in the records of the official in the other jurisdiction, issuing such registration not later than 60 days after the alleged violation. And the citation, again, shall be sent by first-class mail. If it is a leased vehicle, so subsection four there, the owner of a motor vehicle shall be liable for any fine imposed pursuant to ordinance unless the vehicle identified by the enforcement system is leased or rented motor vehicle, in which case the lesssee of such vehicles shall be liable for any such fine. And an affidavit has to be filed pursuant to subsection five below that section, in which case the operator shall be liable for any such fine. So it does have some differing provisions. There are similar defenses available to a person who's alleged to have committed a violation of the ordinance. This is in B six. All defenses shall be available to any person who's alleged to have committed violation of the ordinance, including but not limited to the operators driving an emergency vehicle. A violation was necessary to allow the passage of an emergency vehicle. A violation was necessary in order for the operator to comply with an order or direction from law enforcement officer, which is observable in the recorded images. The violation was necessary to avoid injuring the person or property of another. The violation took place during a period of time, which the motor vehicle had been reported as being stolen. And the operator received a citation for a violation for the same incident. So that is also a defense. It has a similar citation hearing officer proceeding. So if somebody wishes to appeal, and I'm not going to go into all the particulars of that citation hearing officer proceeding, and the evidence that can be received there. And it is quite lengthy. And again, much of this is statutorily based. In terms of the fine, that's in subsection D, page six, for those of you who have a copy, the town shall impose a fine of $250 against the owner of the motor vehicle who commits a violation of the ordinance. And the town shall collect such fines with proceeds credited to the town. The funds received by the town, again, in subsection D, third sentence, that funds received by the town from such fines shall be used for the purposes of improving public safety in town, including but not limited to compensating any private vendor that installs, operates, or maintains the town's enforcement system. And we have a prohibition against the use of images as well, that no recorded images produced by the enforcement system could be introduced as evidence in any other civil or criminal proceeding. And that the violations of the ordinance should not be made part of the driving control record of such owner and may not be used for any purpose in the provision of a motor vehicle insurance policy. Just one additional comment. It indicates that the effective date is October 1st. As indicated in the resolution, the effective date will be within 15 days of publication of a summary of the ordinance. That change had been made, and it just was an issue of the copy with the prior effective date being posted, when the date of the meeting had been changed. So again, 15 days from publication of a summary of the ordinance is the effective date. That's what you will hear in the resolution. And that's it.
Thank you. And we are now open for discussion. Is there someone who would like to speak? Alex?
May I make a motion to bring the question to a vote? Is that an option for me to do?
If you can appoint a second, then we can vote on it.
Second.
Okay, and, all right, we will vote.
You have to, you have to vote first for this.
Can we have discussion on that motion?
Well, we're doing a motion right now on that. So she's going to call the vote on the calling of the question.
Yes, and I'm calling the vote of the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. And all opposed by saying nay. There's one nay.
Do you understand what the vote is about, everyone?
No.
We're, she, she's putting a vote out there to stop the discussion period and move to a vote on this proposed resolution. So if you want to have a discussion, you don't want to vote right now in the positive.
Right.
Okay, everyone's on the same page, right?
There were lots of, lots of non-votes here. So could we do that vote again, now that you've explained it?
Do you, do you want to move forward with her motion? She had a second. So now you call.
We have to call the motion.
You have to call her motion to call the question.
All right, we're going to call Alex's motion to call the question.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Honestly, it's split down the middle. Let's do it again.
All in favor?
One, two, hold on. Please leave your arms up. I'm, okay. And those against it?
And those opposed?
Okay, the opposition wins, so we're going to have discussion now. So who wants to discuss?
Sally.
Just for the record, the motion to, because I just want to make it clear, the motion to call the question failed, and so now we're moving on to regular discussion session.
Sally Boimi, Five Blossom Drive. Thank you for those who voted in favor of the right to speak and ask questions. I am fully supportive of this ordinance. And once again, we are limited by the state statute. I think in this case it's 14-279C that limits us to a $250 fine. I wish it was $1,000. That's what I said at the Board of Selectmen meeting, and I'll say it again. I drive a lot on Quinnipiac Avenue, and school buses stop an awful lot on Quinnipiac Avenue. And I've just seen some horrendous passing of the stop, the stop notification. So I am in favor of this. I just have one question on the defenses, subsection six. You started listing them A, B, C, and then you went to four, five, six. So I assume you mean D, E, F. But I'll say six, subsection six. You can't, a valid defense is if the operator received a citation for a violation of 14-279 for the same incident. So if the police arrest the person for it, then we can't pursue it. But did I hear correctly with the last one that you could get a speeding ticket and the police could also charge you with a?
That's actually not, that was not the intended point of that.
Okay, so I just wanted to make, is it, can you distinguish that? I'm a little.
Well, the reason why I made that last comment was because the comment had been made, well, you could, you could essentially, you're increasing the speed limit in the area by saying, by passing such an ordinance that says 10 miles per hour or more. You're basically saying somebody could go nine miles per hour. Well, actually, no, because they can get them with an infraction.
Okay.
That's non-ordinance.
So that confused me. I thought you could do both.
That was my, that was my.
All right, I just wanted that.
Well, they can, but I mean, realistically, is that something that's going to occur? I think that's the question.
Jennifer.
I'm sorry. I think that that's an enforcement question that you can certainly ask the chief and.
Okay, well, we're done talking about the speeding one. And just that your answer to one of those questions seemed to conflict with what this said. So you can't do both for, we're talking about. So you can't do both for, we're talking about the bus ordinance.
Because, then again, it specifically is in the statute.
Okay.
In the subsection I, yeah, I'm sorry. It's in subsection I of the statute that is providing the authority that you cannot do both.
For the bus, okay.
For this specific ordinance.
Okay, I just, I just wanted that clarified, but I fully support this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Additional comments? Yes, Mary, isn't it?
Yes. This is gonna be, oh, Mary White Summerlane, this is gonna be short, sweetened to the point. Tom and I are in favor of this, and also, we are in favor of free speech. So thank you to all those people who voted so that we could have free speech. Thank you.
Just for the record, it's an absolutely correct parliament print procedure, parliamentary procedure to call, to seek a motion to call the question. There's nothing inappropriate or unlawful about that. So don't make anyone feel bad for wanting to call the question. It's allowed. You don't have to vote the way they say, but it's allowed.
Additional comments? All right, hearing none. See if I can get this right this time.
You're doing a wonderful job.
Gotta practice more, I think.
It's all good. It's all good.
All right, so I'm going to call the question.
No, you're not.
No, I'm not.
You're gonna vote, you're gonna vote on the resolution.
We're gonna vote on the resolution, okay. All in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed by saying nay?
Please raise your hand.
And the motion passes.
All righty.
And, okay, so, all right, where are we now?
The town clerk will now read the third and final item of the special town meeting agenda.
Here we go.
C, to consider an act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the naming of the following roads previously adopted by the town meeting as town roads. One, naming of Amazon Front Access Drive, Amazon Drive. Number two, naming of Amazon Rear Access Road to Defco Park Road Extension. Three, naming of School Road Driveway to Bob De Mayo Way. Resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, the following roads are hereby and hereafter named as follows. One, the Amazon Front Access Drive will be known as Amazon Drive. Two, the Amazon Rear Access Road will be known as Defco Park Road Extension. And three, the School Road Driveway will be known as Bob De Mayo Way. A summary of the ordinance shall be published in a newspaper having a circulation in the Town of North Haven and shall be effective fifteen days after publication. That's the proposed resolution. Is there a second to the proposed resolution? Thank you.
Now we come to the point of the meeting when we open the floor for discussion on this agenda item, and the rules are exactly the same as before. And Mr. Frida, would you like to start the discussion?
So for those that aren't aware of the actual roads, the road that is being proposed as Amazon Way was built at the time and shortly after that we brought Amazon into town. The purpose of building the road was to get access out of Amazon's parking lot off of Washington Avenue through Valley Service Road to take approximately twenty to twenty-five percent of the traffic off of Washington Avenue down Valley Service Road. That road is approximately seven hundred and eighty-seven feet, roughly. So that road was built in conjunction with bringing Amazon in. It has not been named. It is a road that, if you're driving through Valley Service Road, to go over that road into the parking lot, it's that stretch that we're proposing Amazon Way. Valley Service Road will still remain in effect as a road. So it's that seven hundred and eighty-seven, roughly, feet. Secondly, Defco Park Extension. Around the same time, and maybe shortly before, we had a road built leading from Defco Park into the north side of Amazon's parking lot. That was done also to take some traffic off of Route five, some car traffic. So that was yet to be named because it's right next to Amazon, right next to Amazon's parking lot, and basically runs into Defco Park Road. We're proposing Defco Park Road Extension as that roadway. That roadway is approximately a thousand feet. And lastly, and more poignantly, that the great Bob De Mayo, legendary coach in North Haven, he and I have known each other for years, and I had been talking to Bob's wife, Betty, and during the time that Bob was ill, we had started to speak about what we can do to honor this great man who had impacted so many lives, so many players who played for him. So we have decided, working with the Board of Education, that road, School Road, is the road that leads into the first base dugout off of Sackett Point Road. So we're proposing that road to be named Bob De Mayo Way as a lasting and enduring legacy to that great man who served our town so well as North Haven's baseball coach and has been nationally known. Those are the three explanations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike? Any discussion? Alex?
Alex Johnson, Fallon Drive. I just wanted to make the comment and then probably a motion. I'm not comfortable with a street in my town being named after a company that is currently union busting, that is currently in violation of multiple OSHA labor standards that do not treat their workers well, that most trade unions and labor activists are constantly fighting, that try to sue and take the, take down the National Labor Relations Board that protect everyone in this room and of their labor rights, who currently took away their DBI standards, has constantly, has a man that is willing to spend thousands of dollars on ridiculous things instead of paying his workers a fair wage. I will not be in favor of this, but I also can understand honoring Coach De Mayo. So could I make a motion to separate the question? Or separate the ordinance? Is that an option?
I believe it is an option.
Could I get?
Yeah, I think that that's fine to do that. What you would do then, in that instance, is you would separate A, B, and C.
I...
And handle each separately.
Yeah. I agree with you, Attorney Couple. So, but she still has to put it out?
Yes.
Yes.
May I make a motion to separate the question into A, B, and C?
Second.
Okay, and seconded by Nancy Barrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Are you opposed, sir? You are opposed. Okay, one opposed. Okay, so we are going to take these individually, and... Does anybody have any additional questions on these items individually? Hearing none. So, we're going to vote on these.
What do you think is the question over here?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, sir.
I may have gone up in Deep River, Connecticut, but the coach was a fantastic coach here in North Haven. And for all of those that worked with him and stayed with him and was taught by him, this is a great thing to honor him. He was a tremendous coach, and I, my heart goes out to everybody, please vote for that to be yes. Thank you.
Is there any other question or discussion? On any of the roads? Okay, hearing none. We'll take item one, the naming of Amazon Front Access Drive, Amazon Drive. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay?
Nay.
Please raise your hand. One, two, three.
Okay. All right, the motion carries. The motion passes, it carries. The naming of the Amazon Rear Access Road to Defco Park Road Extension. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? One opposed? One, one nay? Okay. The motion passes. Naming of the School Road Driveway Bob, to Bob De Mayo Way. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think there'd be any oppositions to that. It's very reassuring, okay. Motion passes, that is terrific. And, let's see, there is no other business?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yes.
Wait, wait, I just gotta say a few things.
Yeah, as there exists no further business to be considered tonight, I hereby declare this special town meeting adjourned. The meeting, the minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public by the town clerk as soon as possible. Thank you and good night, and we are adjourned at, it looks like, eight twenty-four?
Thank you. Thank you for everyone coming down tonight.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the Town of North Haven.